Is the approval of the December 2nd minutes? Commissioners, y'all have had these for a little while. Are there any changes that need to be made? If not, I will accept a motion to approve as written.
So moved.
Second.
I've got a motion, the second, to approve as written. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Second item on the agenda is the Stormwater Management Program Plan, SWMPP. We have the review and approval of that. And Kim Burmeister is here to present that for us.
Thank you.
And it's just hard for me to believe it was a year ago we did this. It seemed like two or three months ago.
That's right. Every year, y'all will see this. This is the same five-minute clip that you saw. Just to kind of give you an idea of what this is. The Stormwater Management Program Plan is a component of our stormwater permit through the state of Alabama. And this is going to tell you about our budget.
You've heard from your constituents.
The water is about a foot from my back door.
Our river's covered in trash.
Our driveway's been washed away.
There's an awful smell coming from the creek.
All are connected to stormwater runoff. All are important. All deserve your attention. So, how do we go about creating a clean water future together? First, we must recognize that, as communities grow, the need to manage stormwater increases exponentially. Done properly, a well-managed stormwater program simply helps nature's water cycle, assuring the health of our communities and our Gulf Coast lifestyle remain intact and attractive to new residents and businesses. Recently, the Mobile Bay National Estuary Program solicited extensive input to discover what was considered most important to our coastal lifestyle. Over 1,000 citizens from Mobile and Baldwin Counties provided input to identify what they valued most about living on the Alabama Gulf Coast. The issue of stormwater runoff plays a major role in each value identified. In 1987, amendments to the Clean Water Act obligated the EPA and ADM to require urban areas to regulate stormwater. Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System, MS4, refers to all stormwater conveyance structures managed by a municipality, county, or other designated non-governmental facilities. NS4 stormwater programs are developed to prevent harmful pollutants from being washed and/or dumped into our stormwater conveyance structures, and ultimately, into our waters. The MS4 permitting program was introduced in a phased approach, starting in 1990. Larger municipalities having the greater potential for stormwater impacts were permitted first. In 1999, smaller municipalities were also brought under the MS4 permitting process. MS4s that are designated by ADM are required to obtain a permit and develop a stormwater management program. Your program must be detailed within the stormwater management plan. It is important to understand that this requirement is not just an unfunded mandate. It is vital to the health of your community that the public becomes stormwater smart in order to safeguard water quality and quality of life. Without this education, the value of everything in our lives is diminished, and complaints to your office rise. The requirement states that your stormwater management plan shall include the following minimum steps. A public education program highlighting stormwater. Your education program can include brochures, public workshops, and a website with easily understood information for your constituents to follow. A public participation program to ensure community input on stormwater matters. Interacting with your constituents on stormwater-related committees such as Clean Water Partnership, watershed groups, and Mobile Bay NEP helps connect citizens to the effort. Illicit discharge detection and elimination. Your plan must include mapping and inspecting stormwater conveyance structures such as pipes, ditches, and detention ponds. Ordinances are needed prohibiting illicit discharges of oil, grease, paints, washwaters, and other pollutants. Construction site runoff control. Your municipality shall establish and manage a program to monitor construction sites for stormwater impacts from land disturbance. Your program must include erosion and sediment control inspections that are documented, and you must have enforcement capabilities. Post-construction runoff control. Your plan will encourage development of post-construction stormwater management to minimize pollutants in new and redeveloped areas. Private and public stormwater facilities must be inspected and maintained. Ordinances that require facility maintenance must be put in place. Participants are required to have good housekeeping in place for the control and reduction of stormwater pollutants from public facilities. This includes street sweeping, litter control, employee training, and management of all environmental permits such as scrap tire facilities and underground storage tanks, USTs. Larger MS4s are also required to cover other items such as industrial stormwater runoff, spill prevention and response, hazardous waste, and the application of pesticides, herbicides, and fertilizers. Stormwater program monitoring is required to provide data to assess how effective and adequate your program is at reducing pollutants. For larger and some smaller MS4s, this includes water quality sampling during rain events for pollutants determined by the permit. Finally, reporting is necessary. Your program must document all steps and report to ADM annually to verify that the program reduces stormwater pollutants and minimizes impact to our waters. A comprehensive stormwater management plan is a powerful tool to help reduce complaints, improve the health of your community, and ultimately, protect and enhance the things your constituents value most. Your program may be managed through internal staff or consultants based on your municipality's size, train staff, and budget. At any rate, it is important to realize full compliance is not optional. Many states are levying fines that reach into the millions of dollars. Stormwater runoff affects us all on personal and economic levels. It is a challenge you can meet as an elected official, through your work with constituents, and through your valuable community connections. Let's work together to create a clean water future for Mobile and Baldwin Counties today and for generations to come. For more information, please visit the Alabama Department of Environmental Management, ADM's Stormwater Management Branch, at www.adm.state.al.us.
So this document is on our website if anybody ever wants to review it. The document, the Stormwater Management Program Plan, is on the Planning and Zoning Department website, the current one. So the draft update that we're proposing has been given to you for your review. The only changes from last year are the main changes have been highlighted on the memo, but we added about 300 acres to our watershed, city limits only, watersheds, and updated some of our BNP's and some language updates. But basically, it's pretty much the same plan we had last year with a few updates.
Any questions, Commissioners? If not, we need a motion to approve the Stormwater Management Program Plan.
So moved.
I have a motion to approve the Stormwater Management Plan. Do I have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay?
Thank you.
Who did that video? Was that?
That is by the NEP, Mobile Bay NEP. And they haven't updated it. The only thing that's not accurate for us is we don't do water sampling as a mandatory requirement. That's for Phase Ones, which are larger. We're a Phase Two. So that's the only variation. But NEP.
Do you, has the city ever had grants approved by NEP?
We have. They built our, or they funded our wetland pond down at the park, the North Beach Park. That wetland pond was built with NEP money.
I mean, what about really big, sizable grants?
They probably have, and I can't think of, trying to think.
Do you make the application? You personally?
No, that would be our grant writer or, I guess, our grant writer or Richard Johnson's department would be involved in some of their stormwater projects, NEP. Have they done any grants that you know of for stormwater?
Not since I've been there.
Most of yours are NRCS, right? But they've worked with us on, like, the wetland pond, and they help us with education and the Clean Water Future Program. There's a lot of resources we can use for advertisements if we wanted to and to do blast on different things like litter, anti-litter, and stormwater pollution and stuff like that.
I know this really doesn't, at the moment, it doesn't have anything to do with this meeting, but do you have any idea how many abandoned dirt pits we have in close proximity to the city?
Abandoned dirt pits?
Yep.
I don't know of any. I know there's the one on 13. Is that the one you're thinking about, at Manly Road and 13? I'm not sure that one's abandoned, though.
There is one on 181 down there. They're using if construct.
That's not in our, the court.
No, but I mean, it's within the planning jurisdiction.
Right. And this, the MS4 is strictly city limits, so.
City limit.
City limits, the MS4. Because we don't, we wouldn't be able to regulate drains on county right-of-ways, only on city right-of-ways.
I was just thinking, there's a possibility with Corps of Engineers and State Docs to do something for reclamation for those types of things, if we could get the municipalities and NEP involved in that.
That's a good discussion item for them.
For a big grant.
They would probably be interested in talking to you about it, but I don't know of any abandoned ones in Fairhope that are, that one I think you're talking about, is that one in Fly Creek Watershed?
It's the same one. It goes from 181 to 13.
Right, okay. Well, that one is within our, well, that's not in our city limits, though. I don't think.
That's right. It is outside.
Yeah, it's outside, but it is in our watersheds for our planning jurisdiction, so.
Okay. All right.
Thank you so much, Kim. All right, the next item on the agenda is our multiple occupancy project amendment.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, Commissioners. And so, we considered this item during the December meeting. We also discussed it, did not have it on the agenda for consideration, but we also discussed it in November, and I think we may have possibly discussed it in October as well. But this item is back before the Commission for consideration. This is an amendment to the subdivision regulations. And you see the resolution number there on your screen. And it also has a case number, the SD 19.45. What I'd like to do, Commissioners, is that this reflects the comments that we heard during the December meeting, so there are some additional proposed changes to the multiple occupancy project. Just a brief overview, and for our guests with us here today and also those watching. Multiple occupancy projects are a function of the subdivision regulations, triggered by when the intent, as you see on the screen right there, any project that will involve or otherwise result in three or more units, whether contiguous or otherwise, being constructed on real property for occupancy regardless of the form or type of ownership or right of possession of said units and so forth, as you see right there. You see our first edit is the "or type of ownership or right of possession." I thank Mr. Kim Watson for that suggested edit. That edit ties us to the rights of ownership because from time to time, an MOP may also trigger the requirement for a condominium. So it was an opportune time to add that language. Commissioners, what you'll see in paragraph two, which is the requirements of the subdivider, you'll notice that we've struck the word "site plan" and replaced it with preliminary plat and plans. And we, again, appreciate Mr. Watson's appreciation, recommendation on edits, on the wording right there, preliminary plat and plans. Now, the purpose of this, I didn't explain this very well when we jumped into this. On a multiple occupancy project, following very closely, it uses several portions of the subdivision regulations. What we have seen the past couple of years with the types of MOPs that we review is that there is not a clear process for closing out the project. And it is staff's belief and recommendation of the Commission that we create that clear closeout process, which would be a final plat approval like a traditional subdivision. So you notice items A and B there. We replace site plan with preliminary plat and plans. On the same paragraph two, items C, D, and E are unchanged. Item F under paragraph two, again, preliminary plat and plans. Under G, preliminary plat and plans. Now, H, this is something new. This is totally stand, a new subsection. So that way, we are tying back to another requirement of the subdivision regulations. That's with regard to tree protection, which is in Article Five, and you see the section reflected there. Now, a brief explanation on why that's recommended. If there is an MOP that falls outside the jurisdiction of the landscape and tree ordinance, at least there is the enforcement mechanism in the requirement of the subdivision regulations for tree protection. You see in paragraph three, again, we've replaced site plan with preliminary plat plans, improved the wording for review and decision. And you'll notice here, the requirements of Article Four, Section C, and final plat and plan shall be submitted for review and decision in accordance with Article Four, Section D. So Section C is the preliminary, Section D is the final. One of the discussions, and we discussed this in great length during the December meeting, and so this reflects that discussion request by not only the Commission but also a citizen. And then procedure exception for multiple occupancy projects, which include four or fewer units and no new streets or rights of way, no new utility mains are required. Application for simultaneous preliminary and final plat approval may be made to the planning commission. Submittals shall and all other respects meet the requirements of these regulations. So what we discussed in great length previously was, well, the applicant could ask for a waiver if they thought that their multiple occupancy project didn't rise to the level of a preliminary and final plat. But as we discussed then, it would be better to proceduralize that and make it very clear up front that there is a mechanism for the applicant to request it up front. So paragraph five is reflected based upon that discussion. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm happy to answer any questions on behalf of staff for the wording that you have before you.
Any questions or comments?
I have a question, real quick, Beaufort. Is there an easy way to find the fees, a printout of the fees of what they incur?
Yes, ma'am. That is on the city website, under Planning and Development Services. There's a section, there is a page that lists the documents and applications, and the fee schedule is available for download.
Fee schedule?
Yes, ma'am. It is called the Fee Schedule. It's available for download. And it takes about three clicks to get to it, but it's there under Planning and Development Services.
Or you can call Emily.
Or you can call Emily. She's an incredibly reliable and quickly responsive source of information.
You already can call people to call us anyway.
How many clicks does it take to get?
Generally, seven, nine, or 10 if you have to dial long distance.
And that's part of the city code, not the zoning or subdivision regulations. So that's also available in municipal code and searchable. Municipal code is our digital version of our city code, and it's available there as well.
And Chairman, Commissioners, this gives us, because as you've seen, as you've approved several of these MOPs the past couple of years with this, with your current staff, to generate a clear closeout process, we have to do that via condition of approval. That's very cumbersome and very confusing. This is the most straightforward way to go about that. Also, the fee schedule now is a function of the number of lots, just like a traditional subdivision. Because we may review, we may review a multiple occupancy project that has 90 or 100 units, and may have very large, complex drainage, et cetera. So that is appropriate to mirror how it would affect like a traditional subdivision.
So based on the number of lots, correct?
Correct. The number, in the case of an MOP, it would be the number of units. But the count in the fee is equivalent to lots. And the actual fee schedule says both units and lots, for consistency's sake.
Well, if there are no more questions, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Does anybody from the public wish to speak or have any concerns or questions or input about the changes to the multiple occupancy projects? If not, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. Beaufort, I like to say, I think you did a fantastic job on this. You really did.
Thank you, Chairman.
And I think it was very proactive, because, you know, some of these multiple occupancy projects can get to be pretty big and pretty litigious, and so having this done proactively, I think you've done a great job on it.
And Chairman, Commissioners, I think this is an example of an ongoing and continued effort by your staff to, when we see the need for these types of amendments and edits to both the zoning code and the subdivision regulations, we'll bring it before you. And it may require bringing it to you in incremental fashion, where we identify one small section and vet it through multiple meetings. But we're going to continue to do that.
Since this is part of the subdivision regs, it lives and dies right here. It does not go to the city council.
That's correct.
So the public hearing's been closed, but Commissioners, do I have a motion to approve this amendment, Resolution 2019-02?
Let me do this, Art. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 21902, as proposed.
I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
I second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is a request of Catherine Alba for a plat approval of Point Clear Pond, a two-lot minor subdivision.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commission members. My name is Carla Davis, and I stand pleased before you tonight to present a two-lot minor subdivision. The subdivision is titled Point Clear Pond, in its case, SD 20.01. Summary of the request, we have a public hearing tonight to consider the request of Catherine Alba, owner and applicant, for a two-lot minor subdivision. The property is located on the east side of County Road Three, just south of Rose Bishop Lane. The property is also unzoned. The subject property is approximately 2.72 acres, and the applicant desires to subdivide the property into two residential lots. The proposed Lot One is approximately 2.09 acres and has an existing dwelling on the property. The proposed Lot Two is approximately 0.63 acres, and there are no current building plans for new construction at this time. As you can see to the left, we have a zoning aerial view, and to the right, we have a satellite aerial view of the subject site. Here is a site plan depicting the existing conditions, the existing residential property, I mean, lot on Lot One, and then Lot Two, as well as the 30-foot ingress and egress easement and existing gravel driveways. Comments? The subject property is in Fairhope's ETJ and meets Fairhope subdivision regulations. Fairhope subdivision regulations, Article Six, Section D, require the provision of sidewalks along all streets in the planning jurisdiction of Fairhope. The preliminary plat does not illustrate a sidewalk, and therefore, the applicant is requesting a sidewalk waiver. The proposed subdivision does not include the building of any infrastructure or improvements. Therefore, tree protection plan, landscape plan, and other criteria required for major subdivisions is not applicable. The proposed subdivision did not trigger a traffic study, and none of the existing flow patterns will be changed by this replat. Water services will be provided by the city of Fairhope. Power is supplied by Baldwin County EMC, and it should be pointed out that the applicant will have individual septic tanks, which will require the Health Department's approval. Waiver requests. Article Six, Section D, sidewalk requirements in the city of Fairhope subdivision regulations state, sidewalks shall be installed on all streets within the planning jurisdiction of the city of Fairhope. The applicant provided a letter stating the following regarding the request for a sidewalk waiver. The applicant stated that there are not any sidewalks within existing miles to this property, that the closest sidewalk to the south along US Highway 98 is over 9,300 feet into the south and over 4.75 miles to the north. The applicant also stated that they were going to add a 10-foot sidewalk easement along the front of the lot in the event that if needed, there will be enough room to place sidewalks along the road. Waiver standards. There are six different criterias that staff reviews to determine if a waiver should be deemed approvable based on our regulations. The criterias are listed below in detail, and staff's response to those criterias are listed and highlighted in blue. Just in summary, those criterias ask the following questions. Is there a hardship based on unusual topography or physical conditions of the land or surrounding area? Is it beyond control of the subdivider? Will the waiver nullify the intent of the regulations, the zoning ordinance, or the comp plan? Is there a minimum deviation from the standards? And will there be an adverse effect on the public? And is it necessary, is it necessary so essential justice is done? Those are in summary of the six criterias. While there is no hardship presented, staff stands neutral as there are not sidewalks within the area, and the applicant has provided a 10-foot sidewalk easement for future constructions of sidewalks if deemed necessary. Recommendation, staff recommends approval of SD 20.01 conditional upon the approval of a sidewalk waiver. Are there any questions by the Commission?
I've got one. If we approve this subject to the sidewalk waiver, then it's going to automatically include the 10-foot sidewalk easement?
Correct.
Perfect. Okay. Any other questions for staff? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Y'all have a good night.
All right. At this point, I will open up the public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak to this item? I've got Seth Moore. I've got your name on here. I assume you're the, and then I've got the Hendersons. I guess I could, Seth, do you have anything to say before I open the public hearing, or do you want to wait until after?
I'll wait.
Okay. In that case, Donna Henderson is listed to speak. Ms. Henderson, if you don't mind, stating your address for the record, please.
Okay. My address is 14752, County Road Three. And I've never done this before, so. Thank you, Commissioners, for hearing me on this. We're worried that this subdivision would create other subdivisions. We're on two acres out there, which is why we moved to Fairhope, to be on two acres and not have houses all around us. You know, no one has a sidewalk, I realize that, but if we're going to have subdivision, we need sidewalks. Not that I'm a proponent of it. I love living in the country, and I love Fairhope. The traffic on the easement now is heavy. Adding another home out there would add more traffic to the easement. The utilities, I think that would complicate our drainage situation that we already have out there, which we're in a very low-lying area, and we flood regularly out there, and I think another home would just add to our problems with drainage out there. My other concern is our home values, everybody being on two acres, and we have these, a little over two acre, two, what, half-acre lots that want to be developed. And then I worry that there will be precedent set for other people to divide their two acres into these type lots. There is a pond on the property. My main concern is flooding, because we, I mean, I have pictures. I didn't bring them tonight. I didn't realize that y'all had all this fun stuff. But flooding is our main concern in property values.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Henderson.
Thank you.
Philip Henderson is listed as well?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Does anybody else wish to speak to this item? In that case, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. Seth, do you have anything that you'd like to add? Seth's on.
My name is Seth Moore with Moore Surveying, representing Ms. Alba. Again, you know, if there's any questions, we did get today word from the Health Department that the percolation test did pass. Ms. Alba was supposed to pick it up today but had not made it over there, so they're going to sign off on the plat as well for what we have. Yes, there is a pond on the property, and if you notice on the plat, we've put a 30-foot We've put a 30-foot buffer around it so that it's protected. Again, on Lot One, it's already got an existing residence. There will be one more house built. There's a fire hydrant right across the street, so fire protection is definitely provided. If there's anything else, I can.
Any questions for the developer while he's here? All right. Thank you very much, Seth.
Yeah.
All right. Mrs. Henderson, I'd like you to see on the archives, go back and listen to what Art Dias said at the last meeting. Basically, on subdivisions, if subdivisions meet the subdivision Basically on subdivisions, if subdivisions meet the subdivision regulations, you know, we're pretty much, especially in the non-zoned areas, legally bound to approve them. And in an area, you know, like yours, I don't know that that area where you are has been one of the most anti-zoning areas that there is. But if, but, you know, you get used to living on a couple of acre lots out there and then growth occurs and people want to come in and, you know, without zoning, there's really no, nothing we can do on these. You know, without coming in with some kind of a zoning of minimum lot sizes other than, you know, what Fairhope has in its current subdivision regulations. But I'd just like to throw that out, you know.
I was going to go back there, that same way again. Every time we get a chance, to me, it's, we need to halt that verbiage. And the problem that we've got in so many areas in the county that are within, either within or without or outside of the planning jurisdictions of the municipalities and around the counties, we've had district zoning within Baldwin County since 1991. There have been a number of zoned areas. District 26, for example, is down along the, along Mobile Bay, south of, south of Fairhope. But the area where your property is, as Lee said, was one of those that was just as opposed to going into a zone district as any of them in the county. And it was, it was that way. What ultimately happens though is that somebody wants to do something next to you and you have no protection. In the county, at one point, we had a number of people, we had had zoning for quite some time and a number of people would come to the Planning Commission meetings and they would be raising cane because they had a half a million dollar house sitting on a nice piece of property. And, and Joe Smith was going to put a trailer park comprised of about 15 trailers right next to them. But there was nothing that could be done because there was no zoning in that area. And it met, if it met the subdivision regulations, then for all practical purposes, you've got to approve it unless it has something to do with the health, safety, and welfare of the public. What we talked about the last meeting in December was, y'all, you guys have got the opportunity to do it. And anybody that watches these meetings or comes to these meetings are going to hear that. But whether it's coming into the city, getting your neighbors and wanting to come into the city and be a part of the City of Fairhope or going to the county and getting that district, get people fired up about getting the district zoned where you've got some protection. There's really not much that either the Baldwin County Planning Commission nor the City of Fairhope Planning Commission can do. So it's up to the citizens of that, of that area. So.
Because you're lucky in this area that they're just looking at one residential house. It could be a machine shop or, you know, auto repair, diesel repair, you know, any number of exposures and without zoning.
They could come out there and refurbish garbage dumpsters next to you. I mean, and there's nothing, that's an extreme, I don't know many companies that do it, but that's an extreme, but it certainly is a possibility. And there's nothing that anybody can do about it. So. But you know, you said it when you came up to the microphone. There's already significant traffic along that road that accesses all those properties to the back. I'll bet you 10 years ago there wasn't that traffic there. So what's occurred during all that period is a lot of additional growth that has expanded and exacerbated the problems. And now people start to pay attention. Well, there is an alternative and there's a, there's something that y'all can do about it. It's going to take you guys to do it. There's your, there's your staff right there. Go beat up on Hunter and Buford and Mike and everybody else in the City of Fairhope to get you in if you want to come into the city.
Mr. Chairman, if I may? Just to point out too, in unzoned Baldwin County, but within Fairhope's, but within Fairhope's planning jurisdiction, the minimum lot size is 15,000 square feet. And so you'll notice that the proposed Lot 2 is more than 27,000 square feet and the remnant parcel is over two acres. So they are substantially in compliance on the lot size. But just purely for example purposes, if this was brought into the City of Fairhope and zoned RA residential agriculture, the minimum lot size would be three acres. We can't do that because it's not zoned.
Well, and what that, just so you understand what that means, with just a little more square footage, Lot 2 could be two lots. They could have, they could have subdivided that into two lots at 15,000 square feet if you were in the city.
All right, well, let's move along. We've given our advertisement.
There you go.
Any questions, concerns, if not all, accept a motion?
I move that we approve the subdivision, subject staff's recommendation, including the 10-foot easement for a sidewalk.
Okay, I've got a motion to approve subject staff recommendation including the 10-foot easement. Do I have a second?
I second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposing, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, SD 2002, public hearing to consider the request of Retirement Systems of Alabama for a preliminary plat approval of Battles Trace Phase 7, a 38-lot subdivision.
Evening Chairman, Commissioners. Tonight, as you said, is a public hearing to consider the request of Goodyear Mills in K-wood on behalf of Retirement Systems of Alabama for preliminary plat approval of Battles Trace Phase 7, which is a 38-lot major subdivision. The property is approximately 18.8 acres. It is located on the east side of Colony Drive, just north of County Road 34, or also known as Battles Road. The smallest lot size is a little over 8,000 square feet, the largest lot being just under 16,000. Predominant size of the lots is around 8,000. Property is zoned TR District. As you see our zoning map on the left side of your screen and an aerial view on the right side of your screen. So this is Phase 7. There are six other phases that have been built here on the zoning map and the aerial view. You can see the lots that have been approved on the screen. Hard to see on the screen is a copy of the plat, which you have a hard copy in your packets. Going over some of the site data, you can see that the owner and developer is RSA or Retirement Systems of Alabama. We have tonight with us Mr. Tim Lawley on behalf of Goodyear Mills in K-wood. The development will have, as I said, 38 new single-family residential lots. It is consistent with the TR District requirements and the previous six phases of Battles Trace. A community meeting as required was held. One participant attended to listen and no comments were made. The drainage for the site is handled onsite and travels across other RSA-owned property until it's finally discharged into Mobile Bay. There were 11 LID techniques that were implemented to treat the stormwater runoff at the time of development of Phase 6 and three additional techniques were added for this phase, for this subdivision of Phase 7. A lot of the infrastructure during the Phase 6 construct, Phase 6 construction included the infrastructure, some of the sewer and stormwater runoff for the future Phase 7, which we are seeing this evening. The criteria in Article 4B2 approval standards, consistency with the plans and regulations, those have all been met. Staff recommends approval of SD 20.02 Battles Trace Phase 7 with the following condition. Add a general note to the plat that the O&amp;N Plan or the Operations and Maintenance Plan for Phase 6 of Battles Trace include the infrastructure for Phase 7 Battles Trace. As I mentioned, a lot of the work was done at the Phase 6 stage for this phase of development. We just want to make sure that that operations and maintenance plan is covered for all of the infrastructure. Staff is happy to answer any questions and as I said, Tim Lawley is here on behalf of the applicant to answer questions as well.
I've got a question, Mike.
Yes, sir.
Under your, second one under your comments, you talk about eight point, eight and a half acres of green space. It's mostly wooded, which I'm familiar with that, convey a majority of upstream offsite stormwater to what detention pond?
There was a large detention pond that was constructed.
Where is it?
Right there off of Section Street. It'll flow south of the.
You talking about the one that's on the golf course?
On the golf course.
Oh, the one on the golf course? Oh, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, I was thinking it was going north. I got it. I got it.
Any further questions?
You told me a wrinkle, didn't you?
Keep me on your toes.
What's the final phase?
That's yet to be determined.
That's been approved.
Last one's Phase 6.
No, as the master plan that was approved, what, 10?
Talking about total number of phases that are possible?
How many were on? I just can't, I've never seen the big master plan of what was presented.
There wasn't a number of phases. There's a number of lots.
If you remember, they continued to add properties to it.
Sure, sure.
Heading up toward.
From what we had, what was approved 10 years ago of the master plan, I just didn't know if they had it broken down in phases.
This is probably a question for Tim when he comes up.
I'd say the number of phases depending on the number of lots, if they were to do several 30-sized lot subdivisions or a larger 150 lot, could depend on number of phases. So that Mr. Lawley may be able to answer, eliminate that a little bit clearer than I can.
Any further questions for staff? All right, thank you, Mike. Tim, would you like to present for the applicant? And do y'all have any idea of how many more phases that you're looking at for the original putt or?
Offhand, I don't have a total number of phases. I could take a stab at it and say on the original 180-acre piece, there would probably be two to, two to three more phases on that piece and then on the new piece to the north where Phase 6 is, I would say maybe five to six. So probably somewhere eight to 10 phases additional from what's now. So we may end up at Phase 17. I'm not sure. And like Mike was saying, it all depends on, so we've done some phases that are 25 lots and we've done some that are 70. So it all depends how much they, you know, I think that's driven by the market and how much they're willing to buy it off at each time.
Didn't the TR District, the involvement or the inclusion into that district does not require additional acreages to be contiguous, isn't that right?
That is correct.
So the sky really could be.
Well, I think it does, it, it's, there's a proximity in relation to the Grand Hotel. I want to say is a mile or two miles of the Grand Hotel.
I didn't read that. It's not either, is it?
It's in there somewhere.
To establish the TR District, there has to be certain amenities within two miles, but.
Yeah, but once it was established.
But to add to, I don't think.
I have not researched it that closely.
Well, after last month's meeting, I, in preparation for that, it was, I did some research and it appeared that it's kind of a never-ending story, or it could be.
Well, I mean, I don't anticipate them going on the east side of 181 and continuing the Colony at the Grand or anything. I think they're just kind of wanting to contain it in that one area that it's at now, close to the golf course and all the other amenities.
Anything else that you have or any more questions for developer? All right, thanks, Tim. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing.
Wait, 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 one more. South of, south of this, this Phase 7, there's another little L-shaped piece down there. Is that another phase?
Yes, but when you come in the entrance on Colony Drive, there's some property on both sides of the road that will be future developments.
Got it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'll go ahead.
Can I ask one more question? Is there a way that we can, the public can access the future developments or?
Yeah, we actually have a, an overall master plan and of course, I mean, it's not binding and it's subject to change, but I did provide that to the city. Mike, do you have that from where I said? I don't know if he has it with him, but I'm sure Mike can get it to you or I can get it to you personally.
Sure, no problem. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you. Do you have that electronically, Mike? Or would you mind sending that out to the commissioner? That'd be great just so everybody kind of has that, you know, 30,000-foot perspective. Thank you. All right, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Does anybody wish to speak to this item, this 38-lot subdivision, right up just east of the tall condo building there at the RSA development? If not, I'll close the public hearing at this time and turn the meeting over to Commissioners.
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, case number SD 20.02 Battles Trace Phase 7, that we approve subject staff recommendations.
Got a motion to approve subject to staff recommendations. Do I have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposing, nay? All right, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Tim. Next item, the request of L&amp;M Waterfront LLC for final plat approval of the re-subdivision of Lot 4 Bay Echo Subdivision, a three-lot division.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This is a final plat approval. We saw this case back in April or May of this year and this is the final plat going along with that initial preliminary plat. You'll notice this is the southern terminus of North Mobile Street that ends in a cul-de-sac. You'll see your aerial image as well as your zoning map. All of this area is zoned R2. You notice how the subject property is a long, narrow piece of property extending all the way to Mobile Bay. If you look at your aerial image and you'll notice I've called out a piece of property. That is in response to a question from a citizen. I'll illuminate that in just a moment. And I say that because we may need to come back to this slide. Commissioners, just to refresh your memory, this is a three-lot major subdivision and I'll explain why it's a major subdivision with only three lots. You'll notice the lot sizes listed there on the slide that we are right now. You'll notice the parent parcel, the parent parcel PPI-N. And this is in, you'll notice below that I have a sub-bullet referencing PPI-N 10058. That's immediately north of subject property. And so, if you'll give me just a second to drag my pointer over. The question was, is this piece of property related to this subdivision? And the answer is no. That was answering the question from a citizen. The applicant's L&amp;M Waterfront, you'll notice Michelle Hand is one of the organizers of that LLC. We talked about its location. Mr. Smith is, Mr. Smith with SC Civil Engineering is with us here tonight. He's the engineer of record. Commissioners, I have the, this is the final plat. We'll refer back to it as needed to answer any questions. Again, three lots. And why, how did we end up in a major subdivision that we're back here for a final plat for three lots? And as you'll notice here on this slide right here during preliminary plat, there's an indicated the desire of the applicant to cooperate with the city to accomplish some needed drainage improvements at that area. And so the previous preliminary plat, case SD 19.18, that became a preliminary plat in lieu of recommendation of a minor subdivision approval. We had a condition of approval involving the drainage improvements that were prepared by the engineer of record and have been installed by the city. And to make certain that we captured it, I noted there that the city council entered into a contract, approved a contract with a contractor who stalled, installed the drainage improvements. There's, the as-built drawings are in progress right now. There is a condition of approval to deal with that that I'll explain in just a moment. I wanted to take a moment here and just show you, this is a pre, this is the view, this photograph in this slide was at the time of preliminary plat approval. What we're going to memorialize here is that you noticed that this area is a gravel road, not paved. And as a function of that preliminary plat, there was a waiver from the subdivision requirements that these lots run upon a paved publicly maintained road. You'll notice in the sub-bullet, staff recommended acceptance of that waiver so that the southern terminus of North Mobile Street remain, we may remain unpaved to support the aesthetics of the existing neighborhood. And that was requested by the citizens. What we have here, Commissioners, a couple of slides. This shows the drainage, the two great inlets. You'll notice the one on the left is a bit farther north along the southern terminus of North Mobile Street. Then you'll notice the image on the right, that is right on the edge of the cul-de-sac. From this view, this is looking back east toward what will be Lots 2 and 3. So that drainage infrastructure has been installed. Picture on the left here, that drainage structure is right on the borderline of Lots 1 and 2. This is looking south. And then you'll notice the image on the right, another drainage structure on the south side of Lot 1 looking west. My point here, you hear us harp on the drainage and utility easements that we look for on each of those subdivisions that we approve. This is a prime example of where we can utilize those drainage and utility easements. So if I wanted to make certain that we clarified here, because it received a lot of, uh, it was, it received a lot of questions, um, at the preliminary plat. I did receive one question from a citizen about this, and just to clarify, that Davis Drive, also known as Davis Lane, is not accessed, is not used for access for Lot Three. And so I wanted to make certain that we reflected that here. And as a result, you'll notice that there was a waiver from the requirements of the subdivision regulations needed for Lot Three. So that way Lot Three could be accessed via a fifteen-foot private access easement along the northern boundary of Lot Two, concurring with drainage and utility easement. So that way Lot Three, let me move my pointer over here, this Lot Three is accessed from the cul-de-sac. It is not utilizing this piece of property here, it's not clear if that lane was ever conveyed to the city. So it's not being included at all, I wanted to make certain we were clear on that. So staff recommendation, commissioners, uh, staff recommends approval of the case, Lot Four Bay Echo subdivision, final plat contingent upon the following conditions. And commissioners, I won't spend a lot of time reading through that, but Item One there, it memorializes the items that we talked about. The reason we're going through that, memorializing that is so that a future researcher looking at this case knows why the plat is recorded the way it is. As far as the, as far as having drainage on private property and also the easements and that sort of thing, it's memorialized here in this approval. Now, I will point this out, a condition of approval, final plat, subject development will be signed once the storm drainage inspection video required by the subdivision regulations is submitted, as well as the as-built drawings that will have the engineer of record's certificate of approval. I do need to verbalize a, a request to you commissioners, and my apologies for, for the oversight. Item C, uh, we're asking via condition of approval to make a very minimal revision to Note Twelve on the final plat. The revision to the text is in red text, the fifteen-foot private access easement across Lot Two is permanent and for the benefit of Lot Three. That is a, a minor request to alter the wording of that note that we're verbalizing to the commission tonight. And then you see Item Two there essentially memorializes the fifteen-foot access easement that was previously approved. This ties it to and explains why that is going to be shown on the final plat. So commissioners, a three-lot subdivision with a lot of detail, I'm happy to answer questions on behalf of staff.
Any questions for staff at this time? Thank you, Buford. I'll go ahead, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time, does anybody from the public wish to speak to this item? Uh, if not, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. Anybody else wish to speak to this item, do you have?
I don't have any comments, I want to tell some questions.
You're okay with the fifteen-foot private ass, access easement of Lot Two is permanent and for the benefit of Lot Three?
Yeah, we're fine with those minor modifications to that note.
Okay. Any further questions? All right, I, I think, you know, just for the public, Buford put a lot in that he wants in the record for good reason, but, you know, our decision is basically just, is it built like the, like the preliminary plat, you know, requested? Is the, you know, sole issue that we have here, even though I think it's good that you, you know, wanted to lay that out because our, you know, a little bit of an exceptional case, even though it's not a big case.
I, I always want to make a comment, but pardon me.
Sure.
On, on the Lot Three, take the garbage out to the circle, is that how that works? And so the only real issue with the fifteen-foot easement may be a fire truck trying to get in at some point in time, or is that a problem? I think there's a big oak tree on the north side, I don't know how many limbs stick out in there, but. Is, are you familiar, is that a problem at all?
You saw the oak tree there.
Well, the, the distance with the fire truck most likely stay in the cul-de-sac and fight the fire from there. I mean, it's, it's not a distance requirement, I mean, a distance issue, so.
A high.
The, well, there's, in the cul-de-sac, there's not a, anything blocking them. It's all been cleared, the trees are on the cul-de-sac, so.
Any further questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
You gonna let me do another one on it?
You get it, bud.
You know, it's dangerous for me to make a motion.
Y'all, with you, go ahead.
I make a motion for case SD twenty point oh three, the re-subdivision of Lot Four Echo Base subdivision be approved as noted.
I've got a, a motion to approve as noted, do I have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, old business, honor.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioner. We have, um, the council, just FYI, Christmas Eve, I believe, extended the moratorium for Greeno as we requested. And I just want to run through a quick presentation I gave them, and just so you're on the same page and, and kind of, I've been promising Lee some of these reasons why I'm recommending some changes. So this is, this is the first draft of that, and, and what I'll also do is ask to, uh, go ahead and schedule a new work, a work session between this meeting and the next, so we can get together. The, the moratorium was extended, but we still need to act with some urgency on this.
How long was the extension?
May first, and we have some hurdles during that time with our notifications. We basically lose a month the way some things fall for notifying, so this, we'll need to make it through planning commission and council. And so we, we can't just rest on our little hindquarters here, so, so I'm going to ask to, um, and, and we don't have a location. I would like that to be a little bit more roundtable kind of discussion at the next meeting, so if you choose to do that, we can, we will need a week prior, before the meeting to advertise minimum. So we can look at some dates toward the end here, but if we can schedule that, but, uh, location is, we'll advertise, that would, that would.
Who are you anticipating including, public?
Public, this will be a public meeting. You know, the intent is a work session mainly for, for planning commission to hear our ideas and kind of get that down the road. But, but certainly, you know, as, as you see fit, getting other comments in is more than welcome from us.
Has the public been engaging you guys any more than what it has been?
Not in volume, but I think in quali, quantity. Uh, I think there's been spokespeople from kind of each group that have reached out and shared some concerns. So I hope where, which direction we're going addresses that. I, I think it's pretty much impossible to appease everyone, there's not a magic solution that is, you know, is going to solve a problem for everyone. But I think, uh, where we're headed kind of addresses a lot of the things. It, it, and, and we'll kind of look, look through here on that. You know, because there's a fundamental change happening, going back to some of the old master plans and land use plans as far back as nineteen fifty-four. This one you see on the left here is from nineteen seventy-four. But we all always had this, along this ninety-eight, we had this in Greeno Road, kind of a nodal planning. You know, there's a village here and then a big buffer of residential. Uh, I think what you and council has seen through, throughout the last few years is this push toward rezoning those residential properties. So in essence, it's a change of way, going, moving away from nodal planning to this corridor planning. I think we've all recognized that. So that, that's kind of the, the, the core of what we're looking at. Now, what you saw with that nodal planning, the effects of that, you have this tree cover where, where Greeno is different from your standard commercial corridor. So how do we kind of protect those things is, is important, so it doesn't become, I think airport's been used, but that's pretty much any commercial corridor in the country. There's a, it loses all identity, so how do we keep some identity in Fairhope? I think the form-based codes are a great solution. Some of the, the problems with the way we had things, it was, it was, uh, each, each form was too similar, so it didn't offer any flexibility. You only have one form with each, within each district. For example, the property you see here, you know, great oak tree, but if we required them to push up, there's no alternative to develop that piece of land without taking that tree down. So some flexibility is, is warranted. Another example here, this is actually outside the city limits, but I think it's a good example of how sometimes pushing up to the fronts, uh, not necessarily what, what we want. There's an apartment complex, just, this is just south of the, the, um, high school. It's, you can't see it from the road, you know, they, they have, uh, so, so this idea of maybe at times we don't push everything to the front. Maybe there's some more allowances if you want to build something behind a, a landscape buffer. And that kind of can keep this landscape, ebb and flow of landscape and development we have currently, based on the nodal planning. I know we, we are concerned with what drive-throughs do, but I think there are solutions out there, and this is a prime example of how that is contained within the site. So some sites can contain their traffic flow visually, it's not impactful, still meeting the parking in the side and rear, still has a connection. This is a, I'm sorry, that bottom right is, is a small picture, but they still have a pedestrian connection to the walking trail. I think that's a great example. So kind of instead of looking at what's happening nationally, nationally, taking some of the examples of what works here and creating form-based out of that. And that's what's leading to, what's taking so long here? I am as guilty as anyone, in the planning world, you start looking at what other people have done, and you kind of take bits and pieces of that. In this situation, we're kind of at a master's level program, because this is creating things from what Fairhope is. So not taking ideas from what works around the country, we're creating our new forms that are not replicated anywhere in the country. For example, this is a potential site layout and, that has outdoor sales, outdoor seating, it's got a build-to line, it's got, um, you know, your buildable area. And this is based on, there, there's actually a few sites, uh, Old Time Feed was, was publicized on, on the front end of when this and the overlay would, would prevent this type of building in the future. I think we heard from the community that this is the kind of, this is, you know, something we, we, we want. So this idea of using what the community likes as, as, um, or guidelines.
I think the Old Time Feed wasn't the attractiveness or concerns they had, it was that for some reason that wouldn't be allowed on the use table.
That's right, well, it was, it wouldn't be allowed and used, but it's, there's some gray area if it's allowed right now with our current law. But it was pushing the building to the front would prevent the plants up front and.
theirs is pretty much to the front as well.
It, it, it. Depends on how you look at that, you could move the plants and now you have a parking up there. So it's the form of the building, not the use. So if we define what is an outside sale, um, and that can be a lot of different things, but doesn't become a, a C. I mean, I, I don't want to get too deep in examples, but, you know, if you've got a tractor supply, that's, you still have room to, for displays of something that attracts people to that business, but it doesn't take, you know, three hundred feet deep parking lot where you see everything you got. You have a, a small area for, for display, you're building, and then if you need more in the rear, that's, that's complete. The same with a, a auto lot or, or anything along those lines, it limits the, what is displayed and impacted at Greeno Road. Then you have your building that, that is, is a welcoming feature. So what we'll do is kind of look at these, these design standards as far as lot layout goes and siding of a building. That, that's kind of the, certainly don't have all of those here, that's from the next meeting, we can, we can hopefully have those options and look at what they are. Applicability, that was a big, I think we heard that over and over, what's triggered there, you know, some of the things we talked, that were talked about was, um, you know, relatively minor changes would bring, you know, we have to be bringing compliance and what's triggering the non-conformity issues in our current code. And, and looking at this and applicability is, one way by using forms based on successful, uh, businesses here, we reduce the number of non-conformies flat out. If we can find some ways to, to do that, we reduce the number of non-conformies. And then acknowledging that this overlay does, um, place new constraints on, on existing businesses and, and kind of softening, softening that applicability for those businesses is, if we can find some ways to do that, is important. Real quick on, on the architectural requirements, four-sided architecture, th- this is an example that I saw recently, um, and this is around Birmingham, and this meet, this would meet our guidelines. But if you look close at what that is, it's a very sterile environment, there are metal doors, there are windows by appearance, but they're not transparent, you know, they're, that's still back of house. And, and, but it doesn't meet the, what our goal is. So two things, if, if you don't want to worry about architecture, have a buffer enough that kind of hides the building. You know, I think that, that, that works, um, but I do think from the architectural forms, we need to give that more consideration, not at this stage. I don't think that's something we should tackle here, but full transparency is something we want to bring back, uh, down the road.
That looks like it was, go back, looked like it was in an old pasture or cultivated field where you, you know, and we certainly got some of those up and down Greeno. You don't have the ability to, to, uh, soften the blow on that, on the front side.
Yeah, and, and the trees there will grow, really what I'm looking at here in the, is from the architectural perspective, there's everything that we had originally. There's a sidewalk right up against the building, there's windows, there's doors, there's different variations of height. Um, and this is across the street from one of the busiest gyms in the, in the state. There, there's always hundreds of cars out there, and it's never used. So it, it, you know, some of these things become sterile and, you know, if we can do something where, where it's actually has some pedestrian use, this has all of the criteria, but not the use.
He's talking about more just, it's just ugly.
Yeah.
He's talking about more, it's just ugly, means all of our.
Are those real windows?
All new requirements, but fake windows and steel doors are just ugly.
Yeah, this is the deadbolt in steel door. No, that's, there's no transparency there, you know, so, so, you know, that, that's, four, four-dimensional architecture is, is a, sounds great, but if not done right, you know, you, you can have some bad. And, and I do think we're, we're, we're there and need to consider that, um, but I, I think it's too much to bite off right now. And, and we need to keep that pretty rudimentary and, and, you know, knowing that we're going to, we're going to revisit that, the, the architectural portion. Had to address this, um, we do not do social media, we don't respond on social media, but there are rumors out there about this overlay, and it's, it's, um, it's unfortunate that, that facts are not being spread because we really haven't addressed anything. You know, the latest one was the, the zoning amendments that we've kind of pitched to, to planning commission and have made a recommendation for the council. That's just a under, it's undermining way to get the Greeno overlay standards in, into play. None of those were Greeno issues, you know, the, y'all know that, we know that, so just want to, want to put that out there. And I am going to show kind of one idea, that this is a kind of precursor to what we'll talk about. I want, this is a really convoluted solution, it's, it's, it's got a lot of moving parts. But for the applicant that's doing something, I want it to be pretty simple, four steps, you know, what district are you in? That's, and that's based on a regulating plan, how you use the site and how your building is laid out, and then the building form and building materials. That's the four things. What I want to show you now is, um, and we, we can debate this tonight, we can, I'll just let it absorb, but from a regulating plan perspective, that you're familiar with this one, this one's five districts. Uh, six and a half miles, Buford?
Seven.
Seven miles.
Well, six point seven.
Six point seven miles. That's exacting right there. And, and there was five districts based on, um, sub, subjectivity on which intersections to include and, and, um, there's another option that we kind of, we've come up with. There is, instead of five districts along the, that are each defined, having a more radial design based on three districts, a core, a buffer, and transitional, those are kind of working titles, still using the 400 foot. And I'm going to zoom into an intersection and show that. This is between Fairhope Avenue here, let's go back. How do you get the mouse to show you?
Drag your pointer over to that screen.
Okay. So Fairhope Avenue here, Morphe here. So what we've done is taken basically where your traffic lights are, no relation to the red, yellow, and green, but where your traffic lights are, that's an improved intersection. Richard Johnson's not here any longer, but somewhere around 250 feet, Al Dot says you can't have an ingress egress at an intersection along those lines. So what we've done is used that, to tie that in, we've used that as the red radius. That's your core district. That will have some allowances that others won't. So buildings might be closer to the front. And then as we move out into the buffer, the yellow district, that gets out to 700-foot radius. And backing up one, what we see when we do that is you get 3,000-foot for the transitional. That will be where more of the hydrobuilding and more landscape, you know, uses. You have some flexibility on there. And there'll be overlap of those site layouts. So what you see, what you ultimately wind up with is a pattern that's kind of an ebb and flow, and it, the positive aspect of this is you can pick that up and grow with it. So instead of creating a new district that has defined boundaries, you can use this at a new intersection, whether that's along Greeno or another road in the future, and keep those same standards. So that's an added feature, and I know throwing this at you, what becomes, where it becomes simple is when you start overlapping the parcels. So there would be a regulating plan that's a legal description and kind of hard to understand. It's 500 or 250 feet from the intersection and within 400 boundaries. But we can have online a regulating plan that shows the parcels and they're color-coded. So that's what we've done here, and there's what's.
I don't understand, I hate to be dense, but I don't understand. What's your transitional district? I don't get what you're trying to do there.
Okay. And what I want to get to tonight is just the boundaries. Let's not talk about the uses and what we're accomplishing.
Okay, well, just tell me then, how wide is your transitional district?
It varies depending on where the traffic lights are. So for instance, take a look at this map, and let's go back up. It's clear to see here. Everywhere your green is, you've got that ebb and flow. So kind of, is that Gafer down to maybe Nichols? There's not much transitional district there, and that's the denser development. So you see where the yellow and red is there, they just start overlapping, so you don't get the green in between.
Yeah, but you got your transitional district going all the way out to Bishop Road?
Nope. Bishops, what we've done to get the radius, look, you see the two-tone colors there? You kind of got a, see where it's faded out? It's still 400 feet from the intersection. So you've got two shapes kind of overlapping. So you've got your radius and those bullseyes, and then you've got the 400 foot. So 250 feet from Fairhope Avenue, north and south, you know, out to your 400 foot, you have the, and that legal description, we need that. We need a legal description, we can come up with that. But where we're going for ease of use is, there's a, I mean, that's it. You look at that and see what's your property, which district your property is. Does that, that's not going out to Bishop, that's just, are you surrounded, are you connected to that 250 feet, 700 feet, or 3,000 feet? Which district are you in? And I'm throwing it all at you right now, without the intent of coming to any conclusion tonight. Yeah, this is an introduction for this, and that's why I'm doing it, because I want you at least have a chance to absorb it, and if you have questions by the next time we meet, we can provide a better answer. So if y'all have any questions between now and then on this, this is just kind of the first step. So, but what we do from here and how we move to the next steps will be determined by which regulating plan we choose. Now, this does reduce, I think what we would propose, looking here, you see what happens with our district down here, how far south are we going to go? And what this could do is reduce that, we can take that south intersection out, and, because there's no properties down there. There's a couple of residential R1 properties right now, and we take a couple of miles off this overlay. We take a little bit of land on the top end. It shrinks the overall boundaries down. So how we get to those are, it's confusing. And, but at the end of the day, it's a simple way to grow, to grow it. As someone comes in, we can tell them, you know, this is the legal boundary, this is the circle. If you're within 400 foot and you're in this circle, this is what district you're in. So if somebody's changing their zoning, not on the map right now, or annexing in more likely, that's the way we can do it. And as we grow, we can implement this at other places.
What depicts a transitional district? Like, again, thinking forward of the growth, it's going to not just be in that area, but spread out. What determines a transitional district? Why not, when will that be? Say in five years, that could be a core district?
It could be if each intersection becomes, and this is what we have to kind of create a standard. We don't have to say everywhere there's a traffic intersection, we're going to have a core district. So we can reduce the number of those. That's what I use as a catalyst for creating these. That doesn't have to change. I mean, I think if you, if we signalize every intersection and create a core district there, then you lose the transitional space. And I think that's what naturally occurs when you do this here. You keep some of those transitional areas, and then the way you apply the form-based, you still give them, those people, an opportunity to develop their land commercially and give some flexibility on how they choose to do that with some restrictions.
So I'm probably going to open a whole can of worms. Is this going to, something that's going to go into effect for 13 and then eventually 181, even though we've got the zoning issue? But is that, when we get this into something that everybody's cohesive with and understanding and adapting to, is that?
This is, we've still got this titled, the Greeno Road Overlay Districts, but this could be adopted other places.
Those blue lines are a 400-foot strip?
It is.
I'd do it, does any of the yellow buffer or the green transitional go outside the 400-foot strip?
So what we look at, if we'll look at, get one close. So it's, is the, are the circles intersecting a property? So anything that's in the red, if it's intersecting, that becomes a core district property. If yellow's, and 400 foot, so you've got two variables there. Is it intersecting the red circle? And is it in the 400 foot? So those become, so yes, you have some outside of the 400 foot, just like we did in the previous version, but.
Yeah, but, but, go ahead, go ahead, Kim.
We basically drew this blue line and said anything intersecting that is within a district. Nothing's changing there. Nothing outside of that blue line is being selected. So we still have 400 foot. Does that make, just because the circle's there, doesn't mean there's any properties there.
Well, you know, when you're trying to get the public involved in a situation like this, and you've already, we've already had some pretty substantial pushback. The KISS method of dealing with it is generally going to be the best, at least going in.
That's simpler than we've had.
Keep it simple. Now, the other point I wanted to make was, you just said where you've got existing, like B2. All right, go back to where you had your, the last one, right there. Where you've got, yeah, right there, where you've got your B2. But, but that was, you know, that was kind of developed or allowed to develop under some form of fashion within the city over many, 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 many years. But it wasn't a, really a concerted plan that allowed that to happen. And so, but what it sounds to me like now is you got what's happened in the past driving what you want to do in the future, instead of taking the future and doing what you want to do.
I think that's a fair statement, because we can't pull, put that cap back in the bag. But there are properties out there that still have their trees. They still have the, what makes Greeno different from other commercial strips that we can preserve in the way we do that. So yeah, I think, you know, that doesn't, I mean, that plan I showed you from 1954, for example, had Fairhope Avenue and Greeno as a business district.
It was, there was a potato shed there.
Yeah. So, and that's kind of the land use plan and how to develop. So, you know, that kind of grew over the years, I think, and I think we've got to, you know, I think we've got to use that instead of saying, well, we don't like what happened there, so we're going to now take this area that's, that is undeveloped and say you can do it there. Then you wind up with a commercial strip.
Well, no, what I'm trying, I think what I'm trying to say is, is there's a way to take what's happened in the past, if you're not really excited about it, take those big shopping centers right there, Fairhope Avenue and Greeno Road, as an example. And nothing but asphalt out there. Okay, but then you can work with that and feather that with, feather down the visual insult, if you will, by utilizing a strategic plan for those other areas that still have the trees, and it still can be done. But I don't know.
I think what Hunter's trying to do, which I think, if you can properly, is soften delivery of this to the general public, is rather than saying, everything's got to come up to the front and have this 20-foot landscape, the front-sided buildings, and it has to be done this way, to say, hey, in cases where it warrants it, let alone the buildings back 200 feet, you know, if they've got 100-foot, you know, buffer out there, or a green buffer, we can't even see what's back there, you know, give them that option. I think that makes a lot of sense, if you, you know, put it.
Yeah, I do too.
Put it to an order.
And you're at a disadvantage here, because you're looking at a regulating plan without the second part. And I understand that, that's by design. I want you thinking about this and seeing it, so it's not strange, because when we move into those forms, it kind of starts. What we'll look at then is not the circles and everything else. What we can look at then is this. This is simple. This is, look at a plan that we can host on our website, which one of these are you? And then you look at what uses you're allowed by that color code, what forms in your site layout you are. What this does, and some of the answers, some of the things that this did do, I think we heard, by the way, the previous districts were lined up, maybe we pushed all of the things we didn't want to the southern edge district, and that was unfair. This has a rhythm. There is an equality, the way this is done up and down 98. So there's a.
Well, I can assure you, there'll be a lot of landowners that'll appreciate that.
Well, there's, there's never, you know, like I said, I can't, I don't think we can come up with a solution that's going to appease everybody and make everybody 100% happy.
Well, I think one thing was, don't diminish what Art said in the sense, if you draw a big circle, it goes all the way to Bishop Road, and you've got a lot of naysayers, you're going to have a lot of people coming in that aren't even going to be affected by this.
Exactly.
They're not going to be affected by it. So just make sure that any map that you put out to X that green circle, because, you know, you don't want to, you know, most of the people that I've seen that have been against this, it's almost like for specific reasons, business specific, it's not like they have a problem with it in a macro sense, because, well, what about me and my business? And when I want to sell my business or redevelop my building or, you know, what have you? I haven't seen anybody that's really against it, other than just.
But there's some misconceptions, like Lee said, there's misconceptions still out there.
Oh, yeah.
And I had one, I had one Saturday, guy told me, he says, well, I got, I'm standing on his property line, and he said, well, that car, do you know anything about his corridor district? I said, huh. But he asked me, he said, well, the corridor comes five feet into my, into my property, and they're going to make me do A, B, and C. I'm going, oh, no, no you're not. That's not, that five feet's not, you know, out of a 200-foot lot, you're not going to be in it. But that's, like Lee said, total circle out there like that, right there.
And I'm going to pull this back up to make sure I reiterate this. The circles are not where, this is just illustration for how we got there, and they're even color-coded separately to show that this little dimmer color is out of the picture. It's how we get to this that is a regulating plan. This actually shrinks the affected properties here, even taking in the people that were worried. I will, yes.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yeah, good suggestion, next month. Right, right.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to make a statement that I think Mr. Peterson will especially appreciate. What's on the screen there is the answer.
Is what?
What you see there on the screen, that's the answer. The various circles and dots are the equations. Did you like that, Richard?
Well, you said it right. I mean, I use that all the time. There's no need to show how we make the sausage.
I could see if you kept the 400 foot width and just have a square that's red and a longer rectangle that's yellow and then the green, and just keep it in that one, I could see that being an easier way to look at it. But I was going to ask you a question. I saw a petition, and I didn't read the petition, but it had something to do about the Greeno Road corridor. Was there anything specific, have you seen any of that?
Yeah, yeah.
Is there anything written in there that describes what the purpose of the petition is, other than to either say, I don't want it?
I think it's fair to, the timing of the petition kind of surprised me, but I think it's fair that, in its current form, from what the public is seeing, because we haven't submitted anything new to our website. It's been an internal conversation and talking with other people to come up with a solution. So to, for them to be against what's out there, you know, I think that's a fair, fair thing. They, you know, I was surprised that didn't happen after our special meeting. It waited a little while, but I think it's clear that they're against it in its current form.
I mean, they were against the whole thing.
Yeah.
It wasn't like one part of it or any section of it that they were trying to petition.
I think that, you know, at least the, the Facebook group that, you know, is putting out the rumors, you know, the name of that is not be informed about Greeno Road, that stop Greeno Road corridor, you know, there's, but I do think that, I think we've accomplished one thing, and that's listened to some folks and their concerns, and I think we've got something, you know, that's, that 90, 95% of what's on that petition is addressed. You know, there's some things, I don't think we, you know, I think we need to be concerned with architecture, you know, and that some just don't want us to even consider that. And that's, can't make everyone 100% happy, so. Yeah, but most of the, the majority of the things dealt with applicability and how that was triggered and nonconformities, and if I recall, look, it's been a month or so since I've looked at the petition.
All right. Well, thank you, Hunter.
Thank you.
Are we going to discuss the family subdivision?
Do you want to set a meeting between now and?
For the Greeno Road?
Yes. For a, yes, a special, special meeting?
I mean, we're really looking at the week of the 20th, and we are.
We are.
I'm biased. Daytime's great to have a meeting, if we can do that, but...
What about the state of the city thing? Isn't that a production that's going to take place?
That'll be in February.
That's in February.
Six.
I mean, is that going to be something we can continue the discussion at, or?
Oh, I don't...
I think that's going to be, we can one-on-one. We can absolutely continue that one-on-one, but probably not at...
So, we want this public hearing before that, so they have an opportunity to digest what we're talking about, and then come back and talk about it.
Sure.
Most of ours have been during the day, haven't they, around lunch?
We've had, we've had everything from lunch to 4:00. I'm fine with any time.
I'm fine with any time.
Do you have a recommendation?
I don't...
Your advertising is what's...
Yeah. I would say we're either going to have to have it the week of the 20th, which is Martin Luther King, or the following week.
And they reschedule Thursday, right?
January.
Right. The 23rd is already...
They can have it a Martin Luther King week is okay, but let's certainly not have it that day.
Right.
Oh, right, yeah.
And the 20th is?
Is that Monday? Mm-hmm. But if we have it during the day, then we would be fine on Thursday.
Or, that gives us a little time. Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, any, during the day?
Here's, let me be the devil's advocate. You're talking about what's okay with us, but it really ain't about us.
All right.
Well...
We hope that everyone will come.
That's right, but you're going to have a lot of people at work that are not going to be able to come.
And, you know, we get complaints that everything's at night. So, this will not be the only meeting. You know, that's the only thing we can assure. The next meeting, we're going to continue.
I mean, I'm fine. I've got a real, I've got a horrible boss, but I'm telling you, it's, I can make it during the day.
And I think this diverse, not to exclude anyone, but we will, we will continue the same conversation at this meeting, then we will two weeks, you know, further along at the next Planning Commission meeting.
Emily, you might, I would just ask you to include a statement to that effect in your public notice. It just won't be the only meeting. We know people will not be able to come. You don't have to go into a long dissertation, but just, you know, we recognize that there will be people that are not going to be available to make this meeting, and it won't be the last one.
Yeah, because, I mean, even the ideas we present then, I'm imagining a couple of you're going to go, "You're an idiot, Hunter." You know, and we're going to, we're going to have to figure out, you know, this is, there's a lot of information here. So, we'll have to figure out, you know, and continue that. So, does the 20th?
21st, 22nd, 23rd.
22nd of Wednesday? Does that, any heartburn there?
It'll be done before church.
January 22nd.
2:00 P.M.?
Where?
Location to be determined in the advertisement. I'd like to have that at Nick's Center Library, so it's a little more roundtable, open discussion, but we don't know if we've got those facilities yet. And we also have the Civic Center over here, so if we can, if we can have a little leeway to find a location and put that in the advertisement.
Emily, if you could, on that, when you get that advertisement together, if you could send invitations to the engineers.
Okay.
When we did the LID, the best, the best feedback we got were from the engineers, you know, the guys that come into our meetings, weekend we got, they could, you know, they had a lot of really, really good ideas of, well, you know, because a lot of them have dealt with this stuff in other municipalities, you know, and so, maybe send out and request the engineers come.
Will do.
Do they need to make a motion for that?
Um, Ken, do they need to make a motion for that meeting?
Is there a special meeting, I think, so?
Don't have a motion to set a special meeting.
I'm over.
Second?
Second.
Any further? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you.
All right, we've got two minutes.
You get to go first, next up.
There we go.
That was a good presentation, David.
So, Chairman, Commissioners, this is an excellent...
Hunter took your time off.
This is an excellent time to launch into a compatibility analysis discussion.
Yeah.
And though it's an excellent time to do that, I will reserve that for another time, because it's much too early to have that type of discussion. But Commissioners, I appreciate your patience, and I wanted to ask you indulge me just a couple moments. We talked strictly verbally last time about a possible amendment to the subdivision regulations to have a family subdivision process. I do not have anything for your consideration tonight. I don't have a formal document. However, to keep the discussion going and try to elicit a few, a little bit more feedback, I did want to provide you some documents utilized by the county, and then give you four or five city staff comments, and then I'm happy to answer questions, and we can discuss it as long as the commission. It's a pleasure to do so. Not what you see on your screen here, and we're not going to review this at all, but just to, just to present it, and so, realize these are the application documents utilized by Baldwin County. Essentially, what an applicant for a family subdivision will do is they will request an exemption letter from county staff. And that exemption letter essentially allows that applicant to not be an applicant, because if they're granted an exemption from the county's subdivision regulations, that basically means they have a plat that's ready for signature. And so, it would not go before the county's Planning Commission, and basically, the applicant would collect the necessary signatures on their plat, take it to probate, and record it. This, the county documents here provide that process. In so doing, there will be a zoning verification process the county will go to, because some parts are zoned by Baldwin County. And then if you, again, then what the county provides to that applicant, they provide a formal letter on county, on county letterhead, where they say that their request for an exemption is granted, and they put that in letter form. So, then they then have a document they can utilize as a supporting document when they take that plat to probate. Of course, if the applicant falls within the planning jurisdiction of the City of Fairhope, they must abide by Fairhope's subdivision regulations. So, again, we won't go on ad nauseam here, but what you see at the top of the slide, that is how a family subdivision is designed, is defined by the county. It back references the Code of Alabama, so of course, this is contemplated by the Code of Alabama. The exceptions to required approval, there are about six different county processes for that. They have, they have a one-time split, et cetera, et cetera. This is the exact wording from their subdivision regulations about a family subdivision. So, what I'd like to conclude is just simply make some comments about staff at first blush, what a Fairhope family subdivision process would look like. I think, and so, because these are the primary conflicts between Fairhope and the county. So, first of all, Fairhope subdivision regulations require all lots to front upon a paved, publicly maintained street or road. From time to time, you do consider a waiver from that requirement, just like we saw earlier today. It is possible this provision, y'all forgive me for just reading it, but I think it's best I just read this right off the screen for you. It's possible this provision could be rewritten for a Fairhope family subdivision process to allow an access easement in lieu of fronting upon a paved, paved road. However, I believe we would prepare it so that way staff would reserve the right to evaluate the access easement, determine is there a possibility that easement could become, or be requested to become, a public road or public right-of-way at some point in the future. If it is believed a private access easement will eventually become a public road, staff may not allow the approval as a family subdivision, require reapplication via the normal minor subdivision process.
You're, excuse me, just for interrupting, but you really need to put a minimum easement width?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
In here.
Yes, sir.
Sometimes, depending on acreage, like you've got big acreages, families, I'm talking now because I've just done one with two of my siblings, and we've got about a mile and a half, 60-foot easement coming in off of Highway 225, and for that purpose. But, anyway.
And Commissioners, that is a fantastic comment, and I appreciate Commissioner Dice for pointing that out. And I'll go ahead and skip down, if you skip down about three or four bullet points, you'll notice, one, two, three, four from the bottom, Baldwin County exempt subdivision letter will likely be a required supporting document. So, that requirement already requires that easement to be a minimum of 30 feet wide. So, I think probably what will happen is we will simply mirror that, but if someone, if we were able to create this process for a family subdivision, they would include in their supporting documents that county exempt letter. So, we would know that they are meeting that requirement as well. So, that would satisfy both of those issues. That's a great point. I think that, picking up where we left off, I think this is a process, if we did it, I believe it would only be within the ETJ. I think that all other subdivisions within the city limits would continue the current subdivision process. I think that we, if we did this for four or fewer lots, have it mirror an existing Fairhope minor subdivision as far as lot quantity, and we talked about the supporting letter from the county. I think that this would likely require all required provisions, such as adequate quantity and location of fire hydrants, utility mains are in place in the field at the time of family subdivision application. Everything is there.
Say that again?
Basically, we want, we want to, an application that we'd essentially be able to review very quickly, that there's really not a technical, a deep dive technical review would not be required. So, all the utility mains are there in place. If they, there's a, the fire hydrants are where they need to be.
For a family subdivision?
Yes, sir, and so, so, and the reason for that...
You don't have to extend utilities to it, like it's on a main.
Correct. You have all the utility mains, you have water mains, you have fire hydrants, all those components, because here's the next-to-last bullet point. If the requested family subdivision does not trigger any technical reviews, normally associated with a minor subdivision, so drainage, traffic study, wetlands delineation, et cetera, all that is already done. One request that we may have of staff is that when this is adopted, that staff have the authority to approve it administratively. Separate application process for a family subdivision would likely be created, but if it met all the requirements of a family subdivision, then staff, we would possibly request that staff has the authority to approve it, almost like a replat.
Where did you, just a second ago, you mentioned four lots or less. Is that what we're talking about?
Yes, sir, that's correct, that's correct.
No. No. You've got seven siblings.
Okay.
And you've got two parents. I mean, that, that doesn't work. You've got 200 acres, and I'm going to get, if there's no...
That is why we're here tonight, so please, go ahead.
There's no reason to discuss it here. I would love to give you a good example of one, it's a big tract, it's 1,200 acres, but there are multiple properties, multiple properties, but they're still all within the family, whatever the family might be, whether it be three people or 10 people. But the thought that you're going to limit a family subdivision to four lots, doesn't help when you've got families like mine, that've got seven kids in it. And it's, and it works, it works fine within the county. You better just get ready and find you another technical representative to hire. Mary Bishop out there is about dead.
Commissioners, I think that that's a fantastic comment, and for the purposes of this meeting, so we don't spend a lot of time dwelling on it, but to answer that and address that, I think the way we could possibly handle that is, if you have seven, eight, 10 lots, because of legitimate family members who would be eligible due to their family membership. If it, what we would have to contemplate, what we'd have to figure out how to handle is, if you have a seven or eight lot, or nine or 10 lot subdivision, that's almost certainly going to trigger some type of drainage design. And so, then we're back into a major subdivision.
But you're calling, but you think outside the box now. A lot is not, is not 210 by 210. A lot can be 20, 40, 80 acres or so. So, yeah, maybe it, but I don't think it triggers it. It doesn't trigger it for the county like that. Now, the other thing you've got to think outside the box on is, the number of parcels can be, can greatly exceed the number of members of a family subdivision. So, that you've got one owner, say me, say you, you and I, you know, we're family, and we do one, and we've got six parcels because of how the property lays out, and you've got three of them, and I've got three of them. So, it's really not limited in the county to one parcel per person involved in the family subdivision. You understand what I'm saying?
I do, and I think we can, I think we can figure out a way to make this work, and, which is exactly why we're here tonight, why we're having this discussion, so...
And I think personally, we need to probably start conservative and loosen up as we go, rather than, you know, die by the thousand scratches. I mean, you've got one guy that has, you know, seven kids and eight, six-acre parcels, and, you know, comes in with, you know, 56 lots under a family subdivision, with no drainage sidewalks, or green space, or anything, then, you know, you're just kind of opening Pandora's Box, and, you know, giving people a way to get around the subdivision regulations. I mean, versus, you know, somebody that's legitimately got seven kids and 700 acres, and wants to give each kid 100 acres of honeyland. I mean, that's a, you know, a totally different thing, but, you know, like you say, what you do for one, you have to do for the others. So, if you open it up to where you can, you know, divide every parcel up to eight pieces, then, you know, somebody gives their spouse three, and a couple...
The county's got additional regulations to stipulate
Right.
your ability to sell outside the family, once it's divided.
For one year.
And Commissioners, and I'm glad, I'm glad you brought that up, gentlemen. I did not make a bullet point for that, and it didn't occur to me until after we had that. I think that what we also contemplate is, and to avoid, and this is not a criticism of anyone, but to avoid that this could, there could be a way to get an eight, 10, 12, or six or seven lot subdivision approved, without going through the Planning Commission and calling it a family subdivision, I think we should contemplate some type of time limit on re-subdivisions following approval of a family subdivision. And maybe that's a year, maybe that's two years, that'll be something else we have to vet. My final comment, Commissioners, I think that no waivers would be accepted in this process. That if an applicant requested a waiver, then they go through the regular subdivision process, because the purpose of this would be to have a streamlined approval process.
That's right.
And a waiver would be a complete contradiction of a streamlined approval process, and I don't think we as staff ever want to get into a position where we're granting a formalized waiver of a subdivision regulation without bringing it before this body.
That's a good point. And to go back to Lee's example, there may be an opportunity, just something to consider, is a minimum acreage for a given, a given lot.
True.
Where you don't have 56 half-acre lots that are owned by seven or eight family members, that they've got to be 15 or 20 acres.
Right.
And there are some other, and I'll conclude here in just, in just one moment, there are some other factors that aren't currently reflected in our current subdivision regulations that I think may be unique to a family subdivision, such as, and I think that, you know, with Mr. Watson's help, we might be able to put it together. For example, if you have a piece of property for subdivision that is not accessed by any utilities, and so, and I don't mean to sound contradictory to what I said earlier, but if you had a piece of property that really did not have utilities available to it, this process could possibly still carry on, but the lot size would be considerably larger, you know, at least an acre or greater. So, that's another possibility we could consider.
And the one thing we have to remember, like, when you look at the wetlands requirements on family subdivisions and things like that, and you think about the reason behind, you know, why do you have a family subdivision? Well, you know, daddy dies, you've got two brothers, or you've got two sisters, or three brothers and three sisters, and a 68 wetlands, you know, 60-acre wetlands parcel, or 60-acre parcel that, you know, you can't subdivide due to the fact that you don't have enough front land access, and, you know, a lot of the reasons for those, you know, the original intention for family subdivisions was estate purposes, not, you know, subdivision purposes, but really more for estate purposes. really more for estate purposes than anything. And that's what you're, you know, looking at, allowing people in certain cases to, you know, settle estates that, you know, for otherwise, you know, cannot.
And Commissioners, my final comment, uh, would be, I think that we would also like to, as staff, reserve the right, um, similar to the replat process. We as staff can, we have, we have the authority to administratively approve a replat if it does not create a new lot. Um, I think if we find ourselves in a situation where the family subdivision is, is requested, and as staff's opinion that it does not meet the criteria of a family subdivision, we simply refuse to sign the plat, and then their, their recourse is to bring it to the planning commission where they can make requests for waivers and et cetera. So, uh, Commissioners, appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Great questions. You know, this won't be a quick process, um, but we'll, we'll continue to endeavor to put some type of family subdivision process to put it together for your consideration.
Thank you, Bev.
Thank you.
Anything else? If not, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Do I have a second?
I knew you'd get that one, Richard.
All in favor, say aye.